Seconds away from six, so I'll just do the spiel. All right, welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Old Lime Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission. Today is Tuesday, April twenty second, it's six P M. And we're meeting in the meeting hall at fifty-two Lime Street. Uh, we had a couple items on the agenda today. Under new business, um, just for the record, um, prior to the meeting beginning, we just did some admin to choose a sidewalk date and we settled on May nineteenth, which is a Monday. Um, and so, uh, the first item of new business, number one on our agenda is application twenty-five dash ten for seventy-five Shore Drive for Jim Powers, the application to replace a rotten deck with a new deck. Is anyone here for that application today? Seeing none, um, that sidewalk for the record will be at five o'clock on, um, the nineteenth of May. Item number two under new business is application twenty-five dash eleven for nine Tanner McKee Road for Carrie Meltzler, Meltzler, uh, uh, for application for pond agents and restoration. Is anyone here? Wonderful, thank you. All right, do you want to tell us about your application?
Sure, so we, we submitted last fall as we worked with Rich Snarsky on Eric's advice and all yours, I think. Um, and, uh, so Rich came out on the twenty-sixth of October, flagged everything. Submitted the forms, we worked with him to submit the forms and you all came up with a site visit on December sixteenth. So flags have remained, everything is there. It was on the agenda in January, we are new to town, we did not know that we could attend this meeting. We are grateful to attend this meeting, so we are here at the nearest possible meeting to that. And so it is simply as Rich has written in the application for restoration. It is a lovely little pond and, um, I believe appearing to the wetlands area was done in twenty thirteen. Couple of hours ago, it's just become silted up and you would say, um, wonderful how good is the pond, but it needs to get all that stuff cleaned up so we can change the flow of that water source to go under the road and on and on to the river.
Great.
So that's simply what we would like to do.
All right, um, so then for that, I don't think we need another sidewalk, just because you guys were out there in December.
Yes.
We were, but correct, so we needed it March, we didn't know what the encroachment was going to be.
Okay.
Was that the issue when we walked away from that?
I think we weren't sure where the spoils were gonna go and.
Okay, yeah.
Were.
Yeah, I, just an absence of detail, like how deep, how much fill is gonna be removed, where is it gonna go?
Right.
So it seems like a sidewalk would still be beneficial.
Yeah, especially if someone could talk to us about that, like probably because it's on a, a stream, you really shouldn't be excavating when stream is flowing. What are the erosion controls you're gonna do to control downstream siltation? Cause I think there was a pond on the other side of the, there was some steam. And interestingly enough, since I've been spending so much time looking at minutes, um, it was regulated in nineteen seventy-nine, probably, I don't think, I think there even was a pond there then that had some conditions, they didn't really want any of the spoil going on wetland soil. And then it was regulated again and, and I, I handed this into the staff, so was in two thousand and twelve, and that time, it was rather, rather lengthy discussion in the minutes, um. And they, they wanted to maintain some kind of buffer, but we don't really have a map to look at it.
What I told Fallon, uh, this afternoon was if you'd like to have the commission enter that into the record, you can, but she was not able to enter that right into the record herself.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I only recognized it when I was going through fifty years minutes, so.
Right.
But the other question I have is, um, it looked like when we were out there that the fill for the pond went on wetland to the, I guess it would be to the east. But it was still very, very soggy and usually unless there's twenty inches of fill on wetland soil, it should still be mapped as wetland. And I had a question for, uh, Snarsky about how much fill was there when he must have done some measurement. I mean, he had a sketch that I think we saw where the, the wetland was and he eliminated that area. But I'd be interested in knowing how much fill was on the wetland soil, if he did some tests.
Okay, so you would want to ask questions over Snarsky, which would be the rec, the, the next regular meeting.
Yeah, we couldn't ask those sorts of questions.
He didn't, yeah, he didn't submit a report or anything, but, but normally a soil scientist would probe the depth of fill and if it's more than twenty inches deep, it's a Udor thens or a manmade soil, so it wouldn't still be regulated. But I'd like to know that.
Is there, is there anybody that hasn't been there?
I didn't go either.
So maybe, maybe we should do the, include it in the sidewalk.
So are you available for us to visit your property on May nineteenth? Okay, and that would be at five thirty at night. Um, so at the sidewalk, the only questions that can be asked are related to the location and the position of the work that's going to be done. So a lot of the substantive questions that you're hearing tonight, we can't ask you that when we're at your home. Um, just because we're not recording it. And so, uh, we want to give you due process, we want to make sure we're covering ourselves. And so, um, if, it sounds like if Rich could be here for the next meeting to answer some questions about your project, um, from, uh, Commission Member Aurelia, that would be helpful if, if you're able to do that. Um, or Mike, if you want to send some of your specific questions to Fallon and Eric and then they can relay it to you, um, and you can converse with Rich, that way he doesn't have to be here at the next.
Yeah, I would, I would suspect he did soil tests when he was out there and to determine where the wetland boundary was and where the fill was, and that's how he, I just remember, and I think it's still what I saw in the digitized stuff, it's still kind of a sketch as to where the wetland boundary was, if you look.
He's not a surveyor, so all he can do is give you a sketch that would then need to be put on a survey by a surveyor, so that's, that's why you just got what he, he does on site.
Well, the, the thing was, is if you look at the, you know, two, the, the seventy-nine approval, no fill was supposed to be deposited in the wetlands. I mean, that's seventy-nine, not that we can't change what someone else did. And then, and then in two thousand and twelve, it's unusual that we have a record of stuff that far back. But, um, they also had an extensive, um, discussion about a, a wetland buffer of varying sizes and that wasn't there when, when we visited the site, so.
I think we sort of reached the limits of what we can do for tonight's, you know, when you submit that into the record, if the commission wants to set that into the record. And then you can raise these issues again next time after we had a chance to get the sidewalk in. But we're, because we can't act tonight, I, I would be reluctant to get too deep into the weeds, like metaphorically speaking about, about the application so far.
They won't be hit cold.
Yeah.
Just gives them an opportunity.
Just to be clear, are you asking for restoration of what was done in nineteen seventy-nine to this application?
It may, I, I'm, I'm just wanna know is how much fill is there? It may not be fill, I don't, you know, when we walked on. Yeah, on the, on the east side, it was very, it was raining granted, but it was very mushy.
Russell Mouse.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if, if Rich had looked at that area, we can ask that question. But I, I'm hesitant to make these homeowners answer for the mistakes of somebody in nineteen seventy-nine. You know, present day.
I agree.
Okay. Wonderful. Of course.
Are you saying you should come back at the next meeting?
Yes.
And we will also in the meantime have heard some of your questions via Eric or one of you.
Right.
To, that be asked to Rich.
Yes.
And Rich will give us the words to say to answer the question you're talking about.
Exactly.
The next meeting, and also you would also come into the site at five thirty and five nineteen.
Correct, yes, and so the next meeting is the twenty-seventh, okay, that's like, let me open my calendar app. So the next meeting is the twenty-seventh at six o'clock, same room. Um, and yes, uh, Eric and Fallon will help relay some of the questions from Mr. Aurelia. So you can talk to Rich, because you know, like getting these experts up here to come to these meetings, it's an expense to you, but also sometimes there's conflicts and schedules. So we try to do what we can to make sure everything can be timed. Wonderful, well, thank you so much.
Is there anything to take our leave?
You can take your leave, unless you wanna listen to everyone else's application. I'm just teasing. Thank you, a wonderful evening, oh, and don't forget your jacket. All right, item number three hundred new business is application twenty-five dash twelve for twenty-one Shore Drive. Uh, Jerry, Jerry Capuska, uh, applicant for the application to demolish existing non-conforming dwelling and deck to provide a new conforming deck and dwelling. The structures will be further away from Rogers Lake. Hear from that. Okay, seeing none, moving on to item number four, which is application twenty-five dash thirteen for twelve Button Ball Road. C Freeman and Sandra J Downing. The building of a single-story twelve-by-fourteen-foot sunroom addition to the rear west-facing side of an existing house in place of an existing eight-by-five-foot deck. Is anyone, come on up, sir. Can you introduce yourself? Wonderful, thank you Ted, and do you want to tell us anything about your application?
Well, um, it's, it's gonna replace that small deck, it's gonna be twelve feet wide, fourteen foot deep, you know, away from the house, it's gonna be on the, uh, northwest corner of the house facing the wetlands, but, uh, no part of it will be any closer than about a hundred more than a hundred feet from my wetlands.
Nothing, it, it does the nineteenth of May work for you to, for us to be at your house? And let me just, six o'clock, at six o'clock, just to, the nineteenth of May, it's a Monday. So, that's six o'clock, yes. And so, um, the commission will just view the site, see if they have any questions that come out of it. The only questions they can ask at the site visit, if you are there or a representative doing the work is, um, about the location and the proximity to wetlands. Um, so sometimes it's helpful to put like a flag where the wetlands are. And just so they can, or, or we can all orient ourselves to it. Um, and then depending on how the sidewalk goes, they might have questions to ask at the next meeting.
Clear, the land is fairly high, I think it's, uh, the, the level in your foundation is about twenty feet above the wetlands. It goes out level and then it just almost drops straight down to the wetlands. Any drawings of the, the, um, structure at all?
Long, yeah, it, it's like, uh, do you mean like exterior imagery? Usually we just need the actual, like where it lays on the land, we don't need the elevations. Um, but if, if you have them, that's great, you can provide them. Yeah, as long as we know where it's gonna be situated, that's, that's what we're really concerned about.
Just, just have one comment, I think this is a title talent.
Oh.
And we don't have any jurisdiction, but I mean, there could be some drainage way or a little water force that flows into it, but.
Okay.
When I looked at the, um, aerials and being familiar with, uh, the, uh, what is it, Horse Net Creek Landing that the town has, like, I suspect it's title wetland, and we don't have jurisdiction.
And in fact, we had this issue, the work that was done further down on that side of the road as well, so I'll double check and see if it is.
Yeah, so it may not need an application.
If, if that is the case, then I will let them know that they, that, you know, you guys don't have jurisdiction in your works out, so.
Yeah.
So just to recap for you, uh, where you live might be a title wetland, meaning our commission would not have jurisdiction. And so you wouldn't need to submit an application to us to do the work. So we'll do a little more digging into that and Eric will let you know if we think your property is still subject to the inland wetlands commission's jurisdiction. And if not, you're, you're free from us, so you might not even have to have us at your house.
Postcare management is different.
Yeah, that's different.
But in this case, on that side of the street, um, as Mr. Aurelia indicates, um, in, in the past, much of that has been created as title wetlands, which is a different section of the regulations, regulated actually by zoning and not by this commission. There's a fifty-foot prohibition, you can't be closer than fifty feet to the title wetlands, but beyond fifty feet, zoning will let you put this. Okay, well, let me do a little bit of research, if it turns out that you are on title wetlands and you're more than fifty feet away, then you're pretty much free to build your, your, your structure, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're free to go unless you wanna sit and listen. Nineteenth at six o'clock and.
And, and.
You are still part of the application process here, it may be between now and then we determine that you don't need an application, I'll let you know, okay?
Thank you so much, have a wonderful evening. All right, and item number five under new business is application twenty-five dash fourteen for fifteen Silane Bradley Cost Grove. The demolition of existing three-car garage and multipurpose rooms in construction of a thirty-two by thirty-two foot post and beam garage built on the property and a new two-car garage to include a loft and a bath. Anybody hear from this application? Hi, come on up, sir.
You can get a little closer, we need to be careful.
Thank you so much.
Yes, we have, uh, and pretty much unusable new car garage. Pretty old story of Jerry and it, and there's a bunch of rooms that are just not really of our use anymore for the two of us, so I generally relax to raise the bar, or raise the garage and put up a farm. Uh, roughly in the same spot and, uh, we could actually put cars in, so. That'd be a wonderful, wonderful gift.
Sounds good, does, um, May nineteenth work for you for a site visit? And, um, your property would be at five forty-five approximately? All right, wonderful, any other questions?
Yeah, my, my question was, I did look at, and it's so handy to have the digitized stuff to look at, but not having to come into the office. Um, my only question was like, where's the wetland? You know, on some enlarged drawings, so we get a feel for what's the distance between what you're proposing and, and where the wetland is. And I don't know that it's necessary to get a soil scientist on there, but you could just use what's available online. If you go to the town's G I S, click the wetland layer and it'll come out and you can rent your property. It gives us, it gives us a hint as to where it is.
We used to have surveys and the, uh, so, uh, they came up with a wetlands person came up, so it's.
That's even better, it's probably better than our online stuff.
Great. Five forty-five on the nineteenth of May, and then the next meeting is the twenty-seventh of May.
Could you have staked out where the new structure is gonna be? If you could have it staked out, we're just.
Oh, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, have a wonderful evening. Great, moving on to old business, item number one is application twenty-five dash five for five Elm Street, the Old Lime Cemetery Association. An application to create a secondary access to Duck River Cemetery to provide funerals while the historic bridge over Duck River undergoes partial replacement. All work will occur outside of the adjacent waterway. Hi, Jerry.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good, uh, my name's Howard Romer, I'm with Jacobson and Associates. Uh, hopefully his evening is, uh, Eric Davison, he's our registered wetland soil scientist and biologist from Davison and Farming Hall. That's it. Um, so, uh, one thing I just wanted to clear up in that, uh, you noticed there?
Yes.
A couple of things are struggling, one, it says something about no work in the adjacent waterway, so we're not talking about any bridge work here. This is all about a temporary road, because that didn't say either, so I just want to make sure that's clear to everybody. Um, so there was a sidewalk, so I assume all of you are there or if not, you know where this is. So, uh, what's happening here, just in the big picture is that, uh, the cemetery is bisected by the Duck River, there's a bridge to get from one side to the other. The, uh, the bridge needs some work, uh, which the, uh, association would like to do probably from the six, which is not part of this application. But, um, preemptively, since the east side of the cemetery is gonna be landlocked, once that bridge is closed, they need to keep the cemetery open for interments and visitors and so on and so forth, so we're trying to find a way to get in there. Um, I guess they went around, the association went around to their neighbors and asked for permissions and the ones that gave permission were the ones, um, here, um, Farby, uh, and Dayharsh. So the cemetery is, is in this area here, this is the north side, the, the north end of the east side of the cemetery. Sort of what we all parked and we walked into about here, and then there was a wetland in the middle here. Um, this would be a temporary gravel road, uh, consisting of processed aggregate base material. The idea we would be, we would break off the surface stuff and, um, place, um, a geotextile and then place processed aggregate base material, the entire embankment per se is processed aggregate base material, there's no gravel, there's no um, fill, there's no pavement, um, we're gonna place that right on the geotextile. It's, it's highest height is a couple of feet, probably in the area where the water was, because we've gotta get a drainage pipe uh, underneath it, um, because there is an existing storm pipe right here that was feeding that wetland and we gotta keep that water moving westerly. Um, there is a profile in here, it's distorted, so don't be deceived, typical engineers, uh, this is two feet. Uh, that pipe is right in this area here, so areas to the left and the right are considerable, that's probably about a foot or so, it's a line. Um, the amount of, of fill in the wetlands, it's about point zero five acres, that's about twenty-two hundred square feet in the wetland itself, there's about point one acres of, um, fill in the upland area. So this line here is a hundred foot from the wetland line, so it's point oh five in the wetland and then point one here and here in total, in the upland area. Um, in terms of volume, uh, about three hundred cubic yards total for the road and about a hundred and fifty of which would be in the wetland. Uh, again, temporary road, um, not sure exactly when we're gonna do it. Um, if they are in the forward with the bridge next year, then obviously it would be sometime before that. And then once the bridge work is over, it would be removed. Um, there are erosion setting controls on the, on the downstream side. If you got a chance to kind of scuttle for the drawings, there's a, a detailing here, uh, like the road embankment, just, just real basic. Uh, it's a twelve-foot traveled width with two to one side slopes, so it would be about twenty-foot wide footprint at worst will be good for the wetland. We had a couple of trees that we needed to take down, but we're gonna leave the snuffs, so we're gonna cut up the trees, flush. Try and snake the road through between the rest of the trees, there are two trees right here. Not an arborist, I don't even know if they're healthy or not, maybe some of you guys know better than, than I or maybe Eric, I'm not on that. And then these circles are trees that we're gonna protect and kind of snake the road right through them. Sinuous nature of the road is really a function of our turning movement analysis, because we wanna make sure that we can get a piece of thirty-foot precast through there when the time comes to replace the bridge based on the bridge design, so we've gotta bring in. That's basically it. Sure, you've got some questions, we'd be happy to try and entertain them.
Could you just describe, I looked at the S and E controls and just describe what, what they are for us, what you're gonna be putting up for S and Es, is it silt fence? On both sides.
Okay, that would be this, this dark sort of dotted line here. And then we've got, you know, because, because the silt fence is sort of running, uh, with the contours a little bit. We've got wings right here to capture the material, but it, so as it, as it comes down this way, rather than having that, any dirty water run right along the silt fence all the way down to the weather, trying to capture some wings. Uh, and then there's a pump discharge, if, if there's need to, to pump any, uh, water, we would have a pump discharge point right here. At least one of these proprietary, I think they call them dirtbag products. Um, they come in varying sizes, you're probably familiar with many, anywhere from ten by ten to ten by fifteen. Typically on a stone pad with hay bills on either side. We limit the contractor to only putting one discharge hose per bag, I've seen you guys try to squeeze a number of hoses in there and then the water just comes right back out, so not allowing that. But these are the, the details for the hay bills or silt fence, we give the contractor the option.
I, I know, could you just describe what you're gonna do to encourage the wetland to come back after the fill is, is removed?
Um, um, I'll tell you when I know about it and then if Eric has some more to add, I'll look at him, but, uh, so we would remove the gravel down to the geotextile, remove the geotextile, um, rake the surface duff back onto the area that's been disturbed and, um, from that point on, I'll let, I don't know, Eric, do you wanna say something about that?
Yeah, uh, uh, our hope is that since we're not. Eric Davison, um, Davison Environmental. Our hope is that since we're not gonna have any, or the intention is not really to have any soil disturbance, that we would let the seed bank express uh, and let whatever's, whatever's in the seed bank come back on its own, um, I we did talk about evaluating it after, it would depend on what time the materials were moved and what time you, you're in, whether it's in the growing season or not. But, uh, if for some reason it didn't come back, which I mean, it always does when we have a temporary disturbance, uh, we could certainly seed it, but preferences to let the native seed express as opposed to bringing in a non-native seed mix.
I'm mainly concerned about, because it's gonna be disturbed and we don't know for how long if, if it gets o- overwhelmed by whatever the nearby invasives are, I'm sure it's.
And the seed banks can be violent or arose. Yeah, the seed bag can be violent for a few years, so, um, when that's removed, again, soil disturbance is kind of the key, well, sort of two things that, that exacerbate the invasive issue when you have construction site, soil disturbance and then what invasive seed comes in with whatever material bring in. In this case, we're bringing material in, but since it's set on filter fabric, it's all gonna be removed, that's less of an issue, so, um, the only potential really is then if we, if there is some scour or soil disturbance, any invasives that are there now could could come into some disturbed soil and there are some bases there, so, uh, my best, uh, recommendation would be to evaluate it, you know, one growing season after it's removed. So if it's in the winter, we'd do it that following growing season, if it's, you know, during the growing season, we would hit it that, you know, following year in the next growing season, um, and we could evaluate it, you know, to do it one time, one year monitoring, if that's something that would give you some comfort.
It, it would me, yeah, I'd just, let's see what happens.
So, but yeah, and we have a lot of experience dealing with temporary disturbance and road, uh, temporary roads in wetlands and that temporary disturbance, um, on, on every source projects that we work on. We, we, we do, you know, probably twenty or thirty of them a year, those are, those are a little bit different, they're timber matting. Um, placed in a wetland, um, but we've had them, we've had them, you know, for anywhere from a month to, uh, for two years and we've seen vegetation come back in the seed bank, so I don't think the mechanisms are much different here with the, with this type of material, but that's, that's the only difference is it's a different material. Um, that's a different methodology, I should say, so, but with the timber matting wetland, uh, temporary wetland roads, we've seen them after a year or two, you wouldn't even be able to know that anything happened there. Exactly, yeah.
Where is the material that's going to be removed, uh, where is that gonna be stockpiled?
The surface stuff, I mean, I would imagine they would either scrape that right off the roadside or maybe bring it right into the cemetery.
There's not much there that you would rake and remove, it's pretty, it's pretty much bare ground, it's not a lot of duff or, or development of detritus or things that you'd scrape up there, so it's not like it's gonna be a big pile.
Any other questions? Great, would anybody like to make a motion?
I'm recusing myself from this one.
Got it, thanks.
I would, um, move that we issue a permit with, um, the implementation of the sedimentation erosion controls is indicated on the plan and that we, we have, um, the applicant monitor, the wetland restoration for at least a year to evaluate whether or not invasives come in and make a determination what to do after, you know, or they make a recommendation to us depending on what happens after that year.
Yeah, I've got some good notes and photos across that wall, basically that cross section of the wetland, so we, we, we have good information we can compare and contrast after that first growing season and see what pops out.
Wonderful, okay. Okay, um, do I hear a second? Okay, wonderful, thank you, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? One recusal, motion passes, thank you so much. Thank you so much for, for working with them to make this happen. All right, moving on, uh, to old business, item number two, a hearing for of, for notice of violation at property addresses sixteen Neck Road in Old Lime and two Sharon Drive in Old Lime.
I have been visiting the site regularly and I visited again as recently as yesterday morning, just to get a sense of it. You guys were emailing copies of those photos, I have our copies here, I would like to show it to the applicant.
Need to see them. Need to see them.
Okay, um, I've also brought a couple of things, just to sort of give some background on this. Um, this was a subdivision that was approved there, um, in two thousand and six, twenty two. Um, this is the original erosion default segmentation plan. Proved at the time of the original subdivision. Uh, Mr. Rosito came in, as you may recall, for a specific wetlands permit for two Sharon. These are the general permit conditions that go with that. I didn't make copies of these, but but uh, we got to sort of pass this around for people to see what they say. The the difficulty is that what is there now? Um, bears skip resemblance to either this plan. Or to the permit that was granted for two Sharon. Additionally, um, all of the catch basins along Sharon Drive are. Filled to overflowing as were evidenced from the photos that you guys saw. Um, the wetlands that at this. At this point here, this discharge point here are just have silt in them to a degree I don't know. Um, but it's considerable. There are now coming down the street here, heat bales that have pipes in them. With erosion that runs down the street and eventually is making its way, I suspect, into that wetlands. Per the conditions of approval, both of the original subdivision and of the two Sharon Drive approval. Um, I was supposed to be notified before work was done and I was supposed to go out there and do periodic inspections. I I have not been notified of any work. You guys required as part of the two Sharon Drive that a buffer be put in. Um, I did not observe a buffer when I was out there on Monday. Um, and as you saw from the photos that were in here, the. Foundation for two Sharon is already in. At this point, you know, I have prepared. I have copies to hand out. Um, oh, you know, my thoughts on what is going on there, what I would like to see happen this evening. Oh, we also have, here is the sub, a commission of approval for the subdivision in here. Okay. The certificate of soil erosion settlement control compliance shall be uh, issued when the application is approved. Um, and failure to comply with the approved soil and erosion segmentation control plan may result in the replication. Of the uh, erosion and sedimentation control certification in other sections provided by law. Um, the erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be installed for the approved control plan using Connecticut guideline for erosion seven fifty control handbook. Again, at this point, what's there, I I don't know. What it is. There's no plans that show what it is. There's been no attempt to get towns approval for what's there. I don't know if it matches what the uh, erosion control handbook would say is appropriate for that location. Um, and the net effect is enormous amounts of erosion down the side of Sharon. And again, ending up as near as I can tell in the wetlands. Um, so. I issued the order and we're here for some sort of show cause hearing. Um, Mr. Nocino is here tonight. I'm interested in hearing what he has to say. But I, yeah, I I've sort of lost. Control of what's going on there and we need to sort of bring this this whole property back into control. So that's why we're here today.
Mr. Nocino?
Yeah, so. The catch basins that run along Sharon Drive all. Bring the water to this side and then into into the retention pump.
Except they're all, the set, the set, the silk basins are full. I mean, the silk sacks in each of those are are totally full. So. At this point, I don't know that the 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 net effect is that the catch basins are being.
That may be, but whatever water runs down Sharon Drive ends up here. Now, we've, I've got some pictures that I just took today. This is looking straight down the the uh, the wetlands from from the road. And then we've created retention areas. We probably put like a hundred bales, hay. And piping to direct the water to where it goes into the retention area. I mean, best I could do is have my engineer come out, take a look at it, make a report for you. And send it into you for what we've done.
Uh, again, I would also propose some sort of restoration plan in the sense that, I mean, here, this is the outlet pipe. From essentially underneath Sharon.
Yeah.
All of this is sedimented. And this is the wetlands. This is all wetlands. So you have, again, I don't even know how much. Sediment in in the wetlands at this point in time.
Realistically, since since our last meeting. There hasn't been, there hasn't been any sediment going. Beyond this point. Every time this came down, I had men there to restore it.
Okay, I mean, but you can see.
Yes.
The sediment even through here, I mean, this whole area is just covered in sediment. We don't even know how much.
While you're looking, you're shooting in this direction, uh, starting straight in. But you can see from that photo, everything is growing in. And then nothing, every time the the silk fence came down, I had men there. Throughout the entire winter. And now we've replaced everything. I've done extensive. Control right now, capture the water.
Well, I I sort of will defer to the wetlands commission's expertise on this, but I'm I'm unhappy with how this looks right now.
As far as lot two. Lot two sits sits back here. I'm a hundred and, I think it's a hundred and fifty plus feet from this line. Which I outlined in red ribbon, so that you can see where everything is. I had the engineer come out and flag it. And then I ran a red ribbon from point to point to point, so that you can see the entire east or south line.
Okay, your wetlands permit required twenty foot buffer. Is that buffer installed?
I have a silk fence.
Not, but a a buffer.
A buffer is.
A a planted buffer. Is there a planted buffer as required by your wetlands permit?
I'm confused as to what a buffer is you're talking. As far as distance, I'm a hundred and fifty feet away.
Okay. Yeah, going back to the wetlands permit and again, the conditions of approval are here. Says here, installation of a twenty foot buffer, which is a planted buffer area between where the house is going and the. The flag wetlands, because obviously if you were more than a hundred feet from wetlands, you wouldn't have needed a wetlands permit. So you came in for a wetlands permit. The wetlands permit says you're gonna install a twenty foot planted buffer. And uh, doesn't sound like there's a buffer. I didn't see a buffer.
Well, the only thing I can, I can, that I've done was a berm and a silk fence.
Okay. But again, I.
If I put any kind of a. Plant or what, I don't know what you're looking for. Like, there's no way to work.
Okay. Uh, again, at this point, folks, I I'm gonna defer to the wetlands commission to give some thoughts on the subject here. I I I have sort of expressed my concerns here. Um, it, the the site is supposed to be. Um, vegetated, the whole, the whole hill there is bare. And again, the whole hill is just, it does not match the erosion fall measures detailed on your own plan. So I I have ongoing concerns about erosion on that site.
We're, we're still under construction. I mean, a month ago or a little bit longer, we just put in all the underground. Uh, piping for the eversource.
So I see that.
And we can't plant and and excavate and then plant again. We're still under under construction.
I I understand.
The the only thing I can do is the best effort to capture the water.
I I, I would recommend that the commission had your engineer detail your compliance with the erosion control plan. As on your own plans. Okay, that's.
Yes.
At the very least, we need to understand where you are in comparison to your own.
You're welcome to come out and.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion and follow uh, Eric's recommendation to issue a cease and correct. Or I guess it is both lot two. Which he hasn't complied with any of the conditions of the permit. And I'm not familiar with the subdivision stuff that, and the erosion controls for that, but.
The the subdivision had to come to this commission as well, because there were wetlands as part of the subdivision. You guys did sign off on the.
Right.
So, again, that's the sixteen neck road subdivision as well. So that's, that also was was a separate application to this commission. I literally took this map from the laser fish for the wetlands application. So this was submitted as part of the wetlands application.
All right, I would just follow Eric's recommendations. And that we're, you know, stop on the site until we find out what the world's going on and have his engineer. Tell us how he's gonna comply with the conditions of apparently two permits.
And again, I think that it's going to need to be at some point, some sort of restoration plan for the silt in that reference.
You could probably consider that at the cease and correct hearing.
Yeah.
More details.
We're gonna need the, by your regulations to set a date for a hearing sometime within the next ten days. Um, it can't be the next day or two, because I would send out a certified mailing. Uh, but again, sometime in the next ten days to have a hearing on the cease and desist order. So. I don't know what anyone's availability is. Um, and we can obviously tailor the date of the order. So that if it needs to show up for your next regularly scheduled meeting, we can do that as well.
I I made a motion that's based on what Eric submitted.
I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem just stopping work on lot two right now. But you're welcome to come out and take a look. And the interim, I have my engineer. Give you, there's a pin. As far as restoration, our plan was to restore it. I had Snarky give us a a planting schedule. But.
Again, you may need to remove some of that silt as well.
Absolutely.
And I I don't even know how much is there. So we need your engineer to tell us what's there and some proposal to restore that what that area looks like.
I have no problem. We want the property to look proper, you know, nice as well.
You've made a motion, Michael. I don't know if anybody cares to second or.
Can you just repeat the motion, please?
I move that um, we follow Eric's recommendations on the handout and. Issue a cease and correct according to section fourteen point four. And that he has um, four other points. That I think should be met as a place to start before we actually get to the hearing. We're gonna have to visit the site, obviously, and see for ourselves, although the the photos are concerning, certainly.
If that can be done, I'm sorry, if that can be done on your next site walk as you're doing. For everybody else, because time is, time is money.
Yep. Uh, okay, anybody want to second that? I'll second it.
Okay.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, seeing none. So then it's just about the date that that we issue that.
Yeah, again, either you would need to hold a special meeting or I would need to delay the issuance of the orders and this should be heard at your next regularly scheduled meeting on the twenty seventh of May. You know, I I don't, I'll leave it to you guys as to how you want to proceed on it.
I'm I'm concerned that just based on the photos, none of the hay bales are staying. I mean, they could move in the next, if we get a significant rainstorm, those hay bales are just gonna blow.
And there's just a pipe through each of them. So again, we're already getting untreated water through that.
Well, that's, that's the control, the flow. So that if it builds up on hay bales.
Defeats the purpose of silver origin control if you have a hole through the middle of it.
But we're directing a physical retention area that we we provided that we built. That's the whole point.
Well.
So I think we should do a cease.
Is this the retention?
I would agree, sir, if we can, then later.
In the interim, I'll have my engineer take a look at it and what 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 area is this in this photo? This is where it comes across under under Sharon Drive.
Yeah, this is here.
Yeah.
Right, so I mean, that's not a retention area, that's.
No.
That's the wetlands. It's it's retained.
Yeah, that's the wetlands.
Right.
Beyond this.
Right, which is being silted in. So that's, that's the problem.
This is, again, this is very old. It happened. It happened in August of last year when all of Connecticut was being flooded. In the interim, we've maintained.
Yeah, those photos.
Actions of the.
But the damage in the silt that was like went in there, is almost a year old.
Well, I was there less than a year and there wasn't any significant damage. When I was there.
You guys were there for Sharon Drive and this was not, it did not look like this for Sharon Drive, where we had done something about it then. So this is more recent than the Sharon Drive approval.
So if Eric were to write the cease and desist. Tomorrow, Thursday, what it, what does people available, we look like in the next ten days? I know Tom is out. Uh, starting the first. I I could do next week.
Those silt sacks in the catch basins also need to be maintained, because right now they're not doing anything.
Yeah, that's.
We're still a day out, I'm good.
Yeah.
Twenty nine?
Those don't do anything when they're full all the way to the top.
You can see, this is not, this is not doing anything. So.
So Tuesday, the twenty ninth for a a meeting, six o'clock? Are good for everyone?
And we'll get cease and desist order out Tuesday, the twenty ninth is good for me. Uh, I will.
This is the twenty ninth of April, right?
Yeah, April, April twenty.
April twenty ninth, I will try and see what rooms are available. And it's not gonna be this room. I will make sure you guys are all notified as to what room will be in. It would probably be upstairs. Though my understanding is you're doing assessment appeal stuff up there, so we will, you will be informed of the room as soon as I I know.
So to be clear though, that's the date for the meeting. We need to get out there and look at.
By statute and by your regulations, if you're going to issue a cease and desist order, you must have a hearing on the order within ten days. To allow the applicant to ask to be lifted or whatever else. So ultimately, the goal here is not to delay him unduly. It's to give him a hearing and then if. You're happy with what he's doing, the order would get at least stayed lifted, whatever. But again, the the goal by statute is, he gets a hearing within ten days. To be able to present whatever he wants to present in to address the order. Okay?
But I think to get to the site, maybe five thirty that night to go out to the site. That way it's fresh in everyone's minds.
Five thirty on the twenty ninth?
Five thirty on the twenty.
That's okay, I can meet you there.
Yeah.
Be great.
Walk you around.
Yeah, sounds great. So, okay, so that way. We're all just together for a long time. I think that's an efficient way for.
Six here.
Yeah.
Yes. And Eric will send the room.
I I will let you know as soon as I have a.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Great. Last bit, uh, under old business. Um, did anybody have any changes to make to the regular or site walk meeting minutes? Sorry, seeing that, I'm gonna separate them, because I didn't go to the site walk. So um. I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting that is stated March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, gosh, there were so many people. He was right next to me. All right, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any objections, any abstentions? Great. All right. And then the site walk meeting, um, I don't remember the date. But did anybody have, nobody had changes to that, but I wasn't there, so I can't make the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes.
Second.
All right, uh, all those in favor?
All right.
Okay, any objections? And I'll abstain. Perfect. Motion to adjourn?
Second, second.
Yay, nobody can object. Guys, this is the shortest meeting in so long.